Does not appear to be here at this time. Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Ms. Corville?
Here.
Ms. Peters?
Here.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the last April 10 meeting that we had. Is there any questions or comments on those minutes that you guys can see?
No.
May I hear a motion to accept those minutes as written?
I'll make a motion to accept the April 10, 2025 minutes.
A second.
We have a motion to accept in a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, going on, are there any public comments on non-agenda items? You could say those at this time if there's anybody has something to say? Okay, hearing none, we're going to go on to, we have no, do not have any old business, so we'll move on to new business. And the first thing on our new business is the Mank subdivision plan. And can I?
I'll be taking that. Thank you, Mr. Wiley. So what you have before you is a five lot subdivision plan for the Lutz farm. This is a 29.34 acre parcel just off of McCombs Road and adjacent to the Timberlake subdivision. The current site features a number of different types of structures. It includes three homes as well as several outstructures. The area around it is surrounded by other single-family homes. You have some in developments and some just on large lots. The site itself does have some natural constraints. There is an intermittent stream that runs along would be the western side of the property. You also have moderate slopes on the site which help restrict some development. And additionally, in terms of vehicle access, most access will be provided by McCombs Road. I will point out there is an open space parcel directly between this development and Shady Crest Road. There are some legal issues that are being worked through, but future access to that street from this particular parcel may happen in the future as part of a separate phase.
Can you point that out? Are you able to, or tell me where that would be?
Can we just go over, point to it? Yeah, that'd be even better. We're going low tech here.
From here to here is a strip of ground that was supposed to have been used for open space.
And that was part of the Timberlake subdivision many, many years ago. There's just been some ownership issues that we've been working through due to the way it was dedicated, or rather not dedicated at the time. But we're working through that, both the township, the previous developer, and this developer as well. In terms of what's being proposed tonight, again, this is a five lot subdivision. We have four lots that are being proposed for single-family homes. Two of them have, like, three of them have existing homes. That's Lot 2 and Lot 3 down in the lower right-hand corner. The more, the most rectangular one to the very right corner there, that is Lot 1. That is proposed as a buildable lot for a single-family home. And then moving down to the other side of the parcel along McCombs Road is Lot 4. This does have an existing home, but it's noted that that home may be raised in the future, so that that will also be a buildable lot. And then that leaves the area known as Parcel A, that's the large area in the central, central part of that development there. Right now, it's being proposed just as a potential for future subdivision. However, if need be, it could also be developed as a single-family house lot as well. And again, vehicle access to these lots right now is proposed as McCombs Road, but in the future, there may be some additional lots at the upper portion of the site that would be accessed off of Shady Crest if that ever comes to be. Stormwater is going to be handled by each individual property owner when?
Sorry, I wasn't sure.
So it'll be handled by each individual property owner at the time they submit a building permit. This is pretty typical of what we do when a new home plan comes in. We then also make them do a stormwater management plan. And the complexity of that plan depends on the overall size of the development proposed for the site. And we already mentioned that Parcel A is expected to be developed into a couple additional lots in the future. So the staff, township staff and Gateway have both reviewed the plans. There are a handful of outstanding comments. I do believe these are addressable comments, but I'll go through some of the notable items that we have remaining. First off, the utility plans do not show any water lines or fire hydrants. We do need to see that primarily so that we can have the fire chief review them to make sure that there's sufficient access to fire hydrants for these lots. In addition, the ordinance requires that they provide some sort of environmental report noting that would note any impacts to sensitive areas such as wetlands and floodplains and streams. So we're asking that they note on the plans that the intermittent stream in other types of sensitive areas will be taken into account in terms of the regulations and requirements to help mitigate any potential impacts to them. We also need confirmation from the sewer authority. This would be Peters Creek Sanitary Authority. We just need confirmation that they do have access and capacity to supply sanitary sewer Open space is also required as part of the subdivision. This subdivision's in the low-density residential district, and in that district, we require 0.07 acres of land to be dedicated per each lot that's created. There is also an option that the developer pay a fee in lieu of. This is something that we should discuss a little bit more. One of the recommendations that I would have is that we actually look at this as something that would be taken care of for the site as a whole when the next phase comes in, and look at possibly allowing for a fee in lieu of at that time. We also require that a transportation impact fee be submitted with each building permit for each new home. There just needs to be a note stating that for each lot that comes in. I think this may be a clerical error on the plan itself, but Lot 3 is noted as having 18% coverage. That exceeds our 15% maximum, and we just need to either recalculate that out or revise the area of the lot. I did some quick calculations, and it looks like you're well below the 15%, so I think you just noted it incorrectly on the plan itself.
It is an error. It's 3%.
That seems a little more reasonable. Even eyeballing it looks more like 3%.
I think maybe what happened is the engineer who prepared the drawing may have taken lot cover to be impervious cover as opposed to your definition of building cover.
Correct.
And if you would measure the full driveway area plus the building, then you might get close to the 18% they had. So they've been told and corrected, so it'll be adjusted.
A couple other items that need to, we need noted on the plan. We just need them to note that there will be a stormwater management plan and grading plans prepared for each building site. And one item that's, wow, there's one other item. The tiffy, no, I already mentioned the tiffy. Okay, I think that's about it. Now, go to the next slide. If you look in my, in my letters here, there's a number of other issues that are much more minor. We're kind of sound fielders and need to go through them, but we are recommending that this plan be approved with these conditions, including the ones we discussed here tonight, but based on both my letter from May 2, as well as Gateway's letter from May 7. We also have the developer here who may want to go through a few items. And if we have any questions for the engineer, Mr. Scanlon's here representing Gateway.
Can I just ask just for clarification on something? The legal issues that you spoke about that are in the?
Shady Crest.
The Shady Crest area. Do those have any impact on what would be the next step? Do those have, do those need to be resolved before it could receive final approval? Does there need to be a copyout on that?
This is a preliminary slash final, so, but for the next, what I'll call phase, or let me just call it another subdivision, whatever they call it, for that subdivision, if they're planning to have the lots like that they were showing on the previous revisions, versions, they will need to have that result at that time. Because what that, that version showed, there was two lots accessing off of Shady Crest.
Okay. But again, so just for, for the audiences and the communities understanding, as far as what we're looking at approving today is the subdivision itself.
Yes.
Not the building of any houses, not the?
Correct.
Putting in of any roads or anything like that.
Right.
And to the extent that developer, the owners would want to go forward specifically with Parcel A, that could not happen until those legal issues are worked out.
The only thing they could do after they get approval tonight and at council, they could put a single-family house.
Right.
And that's it.
Right, okay. And now, this is my same question, I'm sorry, just, just maybe to make things easier. The question about the 0.7, the open space areas, can you just walk me through that? When you said we should talk more about that, I just want to see if I can have an understanding.
So, the way the ordinance reads is that for every lot that you create, you have to dedicate 0.07 acres somewhere in the development per lot for future open space or parkland or some type of land for recreational purposes. You see this a lot in a number of different older subdivisions like Old Trail, for example.
Okay.
That'd be a great example. But given the small size of this, that's why we're recommending it might be better off just being a fee in lieu. Even with the future phases, the total new lots are seven lots or eight lots?
They're all relatively large.
And these are already large to start with. I think a more appropriate approach would be to take the fee in lieu of.
For the purposes of the Parcel A, how many lots did you say could be, if that's, if that is further subdivided in a development plan?
If it's developed as they had originally proposed, it would be three additional lots.
But what's the most?
Three additional Parcel A becomes four lots.
Okay, yeah.
But under the ordinance, how many could it become? Not what was proposed before, but if somebody wanted to build it.
Well, we allow half-acre minimums.
Right.
You'd have to take some land out for a road network.
Right.
10 or 12?
10 or 12?
Yeah.
Max is what, if people want to put it to capacity?
Right.
And this is under the low-density?
Low-density.
And so it's half-acre lots?
Correct.
Okay. And what was the intended purpose? Why, what was the intended purpose of that previously, like in Timberlake and places like that, of the 0.7? What was the point?
The, the point is to get some additional land for open space. The idea being that as you create more homes, there's more, a greater need for additional parkland.
Okay. But that's not within each individual owner's land?
Correct. It's a separate, it's a separate piece of land that's dedicated to the township or to an HOA.
So when we're talking about, say, just if we're looking at Parcel A only, then you take the most 12 times 0.07, we're talking about?
Quarter acre.
Quarter acre, so, okay. Okay. And does that decision need to be made today as well, whether we want to, is it, is it an option for the developer or is it an option for the township?
It's an option for the township. I recommend that you guys make a recommendation as one of your conditions that you pursue the fee in lieu option as part of the future phases, or even if you want to do it as part of this phase, I'd leave that up to you guys.
Okay.
As part of this phase, we're only talking a couple of lots being created. If you do it for the next phase, you could actually have a more comprehensive idea of what's happening and how much, you know, whether or not you actually do want the land or do you want the fee?
Right, okay. And then I guess my, my thoughts for the small ones, that makes sense at first, because we don't know what's going to happen with Parcel A.
That can be pushed out.
I would not want to make a decision about Parcel A at this point.
And what would the fee be?
The fee is based on the fair market value, and there's a formula that goes along with it. And the township then uses that fair market value to establish what the fee is. It hasn't been updated lately, so it needs to be done. So I can't tell you off the top of my head what that would be.
And McCombs Road isn't a collector road?
It is not a collector road. It's a, I think it's a minor collector road. The major collector roads are the ones that require, that don't allow driveways, individual driveways, to be built off of them.
Right. Yeah, I mean, my thoughts just for Parcel A, we want to see what the developer would have, and then what the lots look like and things like that before we're waving any space issues.
Absolutely. Yeah, that makes sense.
And I do know the developer has some thoughts on that as well.
Okay.
So you're taking your whole letter as a condition, where there's really probably nine conditions inside that letter?
Correct. It's easier than writing out every single condition.
Yeah, sure.
Especially when you look at a lot of them, there's, like, the calculation of the lot coverage needs to change. That's very minor stuff.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Victor from Victor Wintle Associates. We are also tonight with Len Lutz and Dan Lutz. They're the owners of the property right there. And the property, the name of the subdivision, the Mank subdivision, goes back to a family name a couple generations ago. So that's the reason for that. I think Mark and Jim have done a good job just giving you an introduction as to what's going on. I just have a couple of follow-up points that I just want to make clear. Relative to the environmental impacts of streams and wetlands, we can tell you there will be no impacts to those because we have large lots and we know where the streams and the wetlands are, so there will not be any impacts to those particular elements even when the homes are built on the property. Let's talk about, we have to get a sewer letter to verify that there is capacity. There, of the four lots we are creating, ignoring Parcel A, three of those lots are already tapped into the sewer. So there's only one, Lot Number 1, that is tapping into the sewer. It's really not a matter of question, but we're following up on that. We'll get you a letter from the sewer authority to say that. Relative to the fees in lieu, we will be paying the fees in lieu, again, exactly for the reason stated, was that the amount of open space that would be created is so minimal that it really is of no benefit to either the homeowners who are sitting on large lots nor to the township to have. So we're happy to put those fees, and those fees could then be paid for some community-wide recreational purposes. My question to you is, are the fee in lieu of fees paid at the time of the building permit, or is it paid by the developer at the time of subdivision?
I'm going to say it's at the time of subdivision, but I'm not positive about that. I need to research that.
I, I probably should know that myself, but I don't. So just, when you go to figure out what the fee amounts are, if you could all just let us know when the?
Sure.
Relative to traffic impact fees, three of the, three of the lots already have houses on it. You only get impact fees on new construction, so there really only be one. And I'm assuming Lot 4, even though we tear down the house and build a new one, won't be paying impact, traffic impact.
No, it's, it's basically the net is what you're paying. So in this case, you had three, you're going to four, so you're going to pay one fee. And you do that at the time of building permit.
Right, and so that would be on Lot Number 1.
Yeah, so we just need that noted on the plan. Okay? No problem?
Is that the 1900?
Yes, yes.
And I stated this earlier, Lot 3 has only 3% lot coverage, and so that, that's been corrected. And we put a note on the drawing that stormwater management will be handled on a per-lot basis. So. Appreciate the staff's recommendation, and would forward, we'd like to do so, and hopefully you will. And we think that the items that are, need to be adjusted or corrected or added to from the review letters is easily done. We're working on those right now.
So every bullet point is not a problem to ratify or?
No problem. It's a lot of add notes, comments, et cetera. Nothing is being asked to change any of the lot lines, change any of the lot numbering or anything like that. So it's just a matter of covering some, I'll call it administrative-type items.
Explain the ones where it says lot lines to be removed. What was, what does that all entail?
The property was made up of a series of larger parcels, and so what we're doing, we're just evaporating those old lines and creating the new lines.
I have a question about the fees, not the, not the traffic impact fees, but the in lieu of fees. What bucket do those go into?
Those go into new, either new equip, they can't be for operating expenses, they are for new equipment or land acquisition.
For parks.
For parks, yes. Yes.
For the parks only?
Yes.
For equipment for the parks or land acquisition?
For parks.
Okay, thank you.
This might go hand-in-hand with what Rochelle said, but what Stephen asked you. So the fee in lieu of, we're only talking about the net, well, no, traffic impact is net, but if we do fee in lieu of for the open space, Parcel A is not?
You can do it as Parcel A, or what we're recommending is you hold Parcel A aside for now?
That's what I said we were going to recommend as well, I believe. Okay.
And that's no problem? We can, we can pull that out of any?
Yes, and then just catch it later.
Yes.
Okay, having said that, any questions? I'm going to ask for any audience comments that might be, want to? And I think there's a place for you to sign your name, maybe address, and take your time and let us know who you are.
Hi, my name is Christine Posty. My husband Dave Walls in the red. We live at 508 McCombs. So I just have a question. I know we're not talking about A tonight, but I thought I was going to get a map that showed me where our house is relative to this. And so I brought our plan, and can somebody tell me?
It's right there.
Where A is going to be relative to this?
Where's your property?
We're 508, so we're over here.
Nope, you're?
Our here, this is us right here. It says, it says here, but I don't know if that's our house.
I can see your house.
Oh, this? This is our, well, piggyball buildings. I can't tell.
But yours is that Christine Posty?
Yes.
T V shape?
Christine Posty and Dave Walls.
The property goes up, down, up, so down, so that, I'm assuming that's yours, right?
She's 508.
Yeah, she's right there. We're 508. Did I say 508?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. 508, Bernice and Barry fingered down here somewhere. And Barry, Bernice is here, and we're up here, but our driveway?
Is that your parcel?
Yeah.
Okay, this is it, this is yours. See what I call a T V shape? The point?
Yes.
That's it, that's your house, right there.
Okay, well, my question is, how are we going to be impacted visually from this Parcel A? Especially if this is news to me about maybe it being subdivided into like 10 or 12 houses?
No, no. The question was, how many lots could be there? We are proposing four lots. One?
I know.
Two, three, four, these two coming off here.
But this could later be broken into a subdivision, is that correct?
Not really.
Isn't that what I heard you say, Mark?
My question was, was it if, looking at the most possible, if something would change right now? Because where we are right now, they are not making any proposal to put houses on at this point in time. That's not what's before us, it's just dividing up the land. My question was just so that I had the information in front of me, was if somebody would change their mind in that larger lot, that Parcel A, based upon our township ordinances, how many houses could be put on there if that's what was decided to do? That's not what's in front of us today at all.
Okay.
That was my next question.
Where is that power line that cuts across our driveway and goes up this way somewhere?
I don't recall a power.
I know where it is. The power line is running, can you kind of see it?
Here's my map.
Kind of through here. It kind of falls through there. It comes from this far corner, and it, it crosses our property up here, and it diverges away from us.
It goes, it goes right across our driveway.
The gas line.
There's a?
There's?
Electrical and?
That's here.
Yes.
Survey.
No, that's on our property. But there's no power line that runs across our property.
Here?
There's a, right.
Really?
Yes, there's no power line that runs across there. There's a gas line.
You must?
There's a gas line that originates up to the next one.
This, your survey shows that right here, it never gets on our property. This is the electric line.
Okay, well, what is if it cuts across, and the electrical poles are, there's a big opening right across here somewhere?
There's something that comes through your driveway up through this way. It's not what your survey shows, no.
And then my final question is, since this is all woodland, would Peters Township want to keep it woodland? It's really kind of unusable land, too, if you can see, it's very steep. But would that be something Peters Township would likely preserve rather than turn into a subdivision?
Well, ma'am, it wouldn't be up to us whether we would preserve it, that is privately owned property. And so they would come in, if that would be their next step, they would come back in and make a proposal for, you know, the lots and put four houses on there, and then if they complied with all of our requirements that are previously required, they would be allowed to move forward, but they would have to meet all of the ordinance and township requirements in order to do so. But since that's not Peters Township land, we don't, we can't determine whether somebody has to preserve or whether somebody, you know?
I have all these regulations on preserving woodlands in general, that's all I mention.
Hey, Steve, can you show us where the wetlands and the intermittent stream are located on the property?
Sorry, it's a little graphic, come here. The stream comes like this, and it curves over, it goes onto her property, her house sits right about in here.
Okay.
And also continues on up into this area, and I believe there are some small wetlands. I think it was down in this area, right here.
Are there any lots above that stream? Will there be any lots above that stream, on top of them now? Would you see the blue stream?
The houses, if there's?
There's not going to be anything up there?
No, sir.
Okay.
Again, if I could interject, we're not, we're not talking about breaking that Parcel A right now. To us, Parcel A is just 20 acres.
No, we get that, she just doesn't want us to know if there's going to be any, you know, inconvenience or abuse. So it won't be any building progress.
Well, I mean, I know what I'm trying to say is that, that when, when they come back and put in a plan for, let's say it's the four lots?
Right.
Then they'll come back with that plan where the lots are, and then you would come back and be able to see that.
True.
I just don't want, we don't want you walking away and saying, oh, well, they said they would be there, and then a plan comes in, and then, you know, they're allowed to make changes, they're allowed to change their mind, they're allowed to do that.
I understand what you're saying, I see what I meant by, I want there to be enough room up there to build above that creek line. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, right, thank you.
Thank you.
There was someone else?
I think I saw another comment, maybe on this side. If you want to come up and put your name and address on the sheet and state your name for us, please.
Michelle Sepola.
I'm sorry, your name is?
Michelle Sepola. Okay. Our association president, Timberlake, should have been here today, but she wasn't. We have some questions. We both live on Shady Crest. So from what I'm re, what I'm understanding is, all these lots, like Lot 5, Lot 7, Lot 8, which are, that's Shady Crest, nothing will be done with them at this point in time, right?
That's correct.
Because we have that whole title-whatever thing, I talked with April and?
This just subdivides the property, once somebody, once someone wants to do something with that, they will come in with new plans, new requirements, and we'll go through this process again.
Okay. Because that would have bound them, because they're right on that?
Yeah, and then, and then they will come through and have to resolve the legal issues and then demonstrate that they are in compliance with the Peters Township, you know, rules and things like that about development.
Okay, my understanding is that our association bought that property.
What property are we talking about?
The, the, among the Shady Crest up there, that, that, you know, where the fire department wanted to put a road down to McCombs.
Was that the legal issue that you're talking about?
I think that's what you're waiting for, this whole title thing and everything, right?
Right now, the, originally when this lot was developed, Timberlake was developed, the developer did not actually dedicate this open space to the HOA, like was required to as part of the plan. So it defaulted to the township, but the township claimed that they don't own it either, because they technically don't. So we're working through this title issue to figure out, to basically make it so that it's, it is in fact the HOA's property, as well as a few other title issues in the development for the open space elsewhere.
But I think we are talking about the same?
She had said that they were going to buy that property right so Lutz could then be able to access the COTSA there.
And so I think that's the legal issue?
Yes.
And so I think that's the legal issue we've been talking about that has to be resolved before a next step.
I think she needed to do something in order for that to go ahead.
I'm sure there's something else that needs to be done.
I thought she would be here to be able to explain that.
But that again, that doesn't really impact where we, I'm not saying it's not important, but it doesn't impact where we are right now, because it's not as if people are going to come in and start building houses or anything, right? Until that's resolved.
No one will be accessing Shady Crest until that's resolved.
Until that's all resolved.
But these lots, these lots that you have even down here are going to be the same as what they're on this plan, as far as acreage?
Yes, lots 1, 2, 3, 4 are the same as on the drawing there, but Lot number 4 is labeled, I think Lot number 5, but they didn't want to go 1, 2, 3, 5, so we renumbered 5 into 4. So, but no.
So they're going to be still big acre lots, they're not going to be like...
They are the same size as on your drawing.
Okay.
And I think that if you were, earlier, we had a slide up that showed how large each of those, and those all meet our ordinance requirements.
I think there would be one here, right?
And I just meant that he had a list there as far as how, what the size was that was easier to see.
I have another...
The smallest was Lot 7, 9, I believe.
Correct.
Which meets all of our...
I have another question for you. Do we have an environmental committee here, impact, environmental impact studies that we have to do in order to develop property here? Wasn't that one of your...
The closest things we really have is the stormwater management plan and ordinance, and that will also impact what can be done in and around wetlands and streams.
I think I talked to you before about this.
Possibly.
Because I, you know, because we have bats back there, they're endangered species.
Yeah, when it comes to that kind of stuff...
I thought you couldn't take trees down that were...
Josh, can...
So if there's any type of impact typically greater than one acre, there's a process where the developer consultant needs to basically put in a ticket with PA Wildlife, and that's where those types of features get identified, that's typically part of the NPDS permit. So that's for disturbances over...
So someone actually goes out and looks at the property to see if there's any environmental impact? Is that what you're saying?
If there's an acre.
I mean, these are huge lots.
Yeah, depending on the type of permit that's required, there's a process for that that the state requires.
But it's not really, it's not like some like Fox Chapel where you can't take trees down a certain width.
I don't think Peters Township has that type of...
Right. Because obviously the other plans, they just take every single tree down.
Right.
That's what I thought. Okay, so we on Shady Crest have nothing to worry about till later.
Right, when they come back.
That's all I want to know. And I'm going to talk to April because I, I thought she had that all, she was going to have that all done.
Well, I'm sure, I think it sounds like from what everyone's ever hears, there is a process, I don't know who is on the other side working on it.
Well, I can tell you the township is involved as well. And, you know, every once in a while we hear about it, something else happens, another step needs to be taken, that sort of thing.
Would these lots change, be it, would, once you get all that approval and everything, could these lots on this plan change?
Lots 1 through 4 or...
That are adjacent to Shady Crest.
So you're talking about parcel A, the big, the big yellow one that we're talking about here?
The simple answer is yes.
So that, yeah, so that's what we were talking about before, the developer will come in with a plan, like I said, right now, they're talking about four lots, but maybe they decide five lots, or maybe they, but that's what we're talking about. But what we're talking with the subdivision right now, where it says lots 1, 2, 3, 4, those are the size that they are.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe a point of clarity? The Lutz's have already paid the HOA for the access easement. That easement has been granted to them, but it's been a faulty granting because they didn't have the power to grant. However, this is a point I want to make you, I think this will make you feel more comfortable. The easement that they have acquired is limited to no more than two lots.
Right.
So your question, could there be more, is not able to be accomplished unless your association sells to the Lutz a third, fourth, fifth, or sixth easement, which they're never going to do, because you're going to protect it. So the only thing that's going to happen up there at most will be two lots.
Okay. I thought the polygraphy of that, that's a pretty steep hill off of, you know, Shady Crest there. They are able to build on that?
Yes, ma'am.
And then my brother looked at it and said, that's a pretty steep...
Mr. Bowler, Sepola, if you could talk into the microphone, because really, you need to talk to us and I, I...
Okay, I'm sorry.
It takes my job away if you talk to Steve.
Okay, I'm sorry. I understand, I mean, but it's no more than two driveways on to Shady Crest point. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
If I could add to that.
If you want to come up.
Absolutely.
You could be the next comment.
Oh, okay, sure, sure.
If she's done, let's give her...
I mean, they've been great neighbors, I mean, they're behind me, they've been absolutely great neighbors and, you know, I just, there's just a lot of wildlife back there. Nice trees and...
Oh, thank you for your comments and questions. And any other comments or questions, including Mr. Lutz, Toronto?
Thank you.
And you as well, if you could put your name on there, so that it helps with the minutes being written later.
Absolutely. Just, I just wanted to do...
Introduce yourself one more time.
I'm Len Lutz, I'm Dan's brother, and I grew up on this property along with my mom and her mom. I just wanted to clarify, the access from Shady Crest and the reason that we're saying, hey, it's just two lots, is because we're trying to also meet the conditions of the township's requirements for frontage. And that particular strip is just over 200 feet long, which gives us the minimum frontage requirement from Shady Crest for no more than two lots. So I just wanted to clarify that so that that was understood. And I've heard several concerns about, and it kind of went down a rabbit hole of you could put up to 10 to 12 homes on, on parcel A at some point in the future. I just wanted to clear something up here. Early on in this, my brother and I were approached by a developer who came to us with a, with an attractive offer to put 30 homes on this in a subdevelopment plan before the conservation overlay was, was taken, taken away. And my brother and I looked at, listened, listened and heard out their presentation, but the thing of it was is, this was our childhood home, too, and we didn't want to see 30 homes on it. And the other condition of that was, we asked, well, what about the homes that are existing, including the one I grew up in and my mom's sister's house, which is the lot 3? And they said, well, that'll all get bulldozed. Well, those homes were all actually not built by builders, they were built by my grandfather and my dad and my great grandparents. So we didn't want any of that either. What we're looking to do is, is just make lots that meet the zoning requirements without anything special, without any, building any roads, without putting in any developments, without putting in 30 homes. And the number of lots is limited by the frontage that we have access to from McCombs Road and possibly from Shady Crest. So the, I don't want anybody to get this idea that, well, parcel A could be 10 to 12 lots someday. It's never going to be, that's not our intention, and we couldn't get it past the zoning commission anyway, because there wouldn't be nearly enough frontage, and we're not road builders.
And that's just true, I always ask that question, because a lot of these people come in about with one plan, and then things change. And so I always just ask, what is the maximum so that we're not, we're thinking just in the first step and not moving to the next steps and not making presumptions about that? So that's the only reason I ask the question, I ask that of everything when we go to subdivisions. What is the most, just based upon our ordinance, that could? That's, that's the only reason I ask that.
My brother and I have watched in somewhat shock at all of the developments that have come up, across the, the one directly across McCombs Road from us, what is the name of that? Castlebrook? Yeah. Castlebrook was a big open farm field when we were kids, and we used to hike up to the top to play pond hockey on a, on a pond that sits up there. We've watched these developments come in. It was our home, too, we weren't really wild about the way that all went. We didn't want to do that with our property. So I just wanted to throw that out there, because I don't want anybody to get the wrong idea about what we want to do with parcel A somewhere in the future. So that's all I really had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments regarding this topic? Okay, I don't have any more questions for anyone.
We're ready for motions. I will make the motion to recommend approval of the May subdivision residential subdivision plan, subject to the staff comments and the May 7, 2025 letter. I'm certain that all those issues being addressed. With respect to the open space land for recreational purposes required at the rate of .07, I recommend that, no, you changed the page on...
I'll be back for that.
I recommend...
Do you include?
That we hold off. That the, that the, in lieu of, be permitted four lots, 1, 2, 3, and 4, and that no determination be made as to parcel A at this time.
Okay, we have an active motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
And before we vote, is this a final stop for that, or is this...
At the planning commission, yes, it still needs to go to council. So you'd be recommending an approval to council?
Okay, so this will be a recommendation? And here in a second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I hear none. So the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. When will this be a council?
Well, that's up to you when you can get the comments addressed.
No pressure, Steve.
You'll have it next week, sir.
Yeah, we'll talk.
Thank you.
And anybody want, can you clear the room for the next agenda item, please?
All right.
Okay, go into the second item of business, we have the MTK development, and this is a planning commission recommendation for a subdivision on Bower Hill. Who's presenting?
I am.
Just a minute, go ahead. Jim?
All right, the plan question was originally submitted as a minor plan, which only requires an administrative approval. However, staff review determined approval of a modification from the subdivision and land development ordinance will be necessary. Per the code, a plan cannot be reviewed and approved as a minor plan if it requires a modification, and this is why this plan is before you tonight. Subject property is two acres in area, it's located southeast of the Just About Farms Development. Dwelling was formerly located on the property, however, it was demolished last year, rendering the property vacant. Though no structures exist, a driveway and gravel parking pad are located on the property. It's worth noting that the gravel parking area is only accessible from the adjacent property to the south.
Say that one more time.
The gravel parking area is only adjacent to, accessible to the adjacent property to the south.
Thank you.
The plan essentially proposes a new lot line be drawn down the middle of the property, splitting it into two lots. A small area approximately a tenth of an acre currently exists in the Bower Hill Road right of way and is proposed to be dedicated to the township. As no structures exist and the plan proposes the creation of two conforming lots, there are limited zoning concerns. However, an existing non-conformity in the form of the aforementioned gravel parking lot area exists.
What's the modification?
I'm getting it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As mentioned earlier, the applicant will require approval of a modification, specifically the style though prohibits the creation of new residential lots accessing roads classified as major collectors like Bower Hill Road. The applicant has submitted their written modification request, and it will be considered by council prior to or as part of the plan's approval. It's staff's understanding that the intent of this regulation is to ensure access to heavily traveled roadways is restricted to those areas with limited site distance concern. An analysis by TPD has found that the stopping site distance at the subject property is acceptable. As such, staff has no objection to the applicant's modification request. Though it is not required, the planning commission may make a recommendation regarding the modification request. As for the plan itself, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the plan, subject to the four conditions on the screen. And if you have any further questions, I am more than happy to provide answers.
So you got four on the screen, it looks like six, well, it's five really.
So what happened there was I did a further, a more comprehensive analysis of the plan, and I consolidated a lot of comments into the comment you see for number two, which is all comments from the planning department review layer dated May 7, to be addressed to our satisfaction.
Yeah, and the little bit of property that is going to be dedicated, the lot acreage is net of that. The lot acreage for each is .929 and .967 irrespective of what's been cut off, right?
Yes.
That's what's left, okay.
Yeah.
And the gravel parking lot, that doesn't seem to be a big deal.
No, it doesn't, it isn't, but it's only accessible from the property to the south, and we like to just kind of clear that. I recommend that there be an easement agreement.
So a property outside Mr. Walton's area?
Yes.
Okay.
So are you saying that to the extent that he would ever then sell one of them, do you think that there should require an easement?
Yes.
Okay. Dave, you want to come up and give us a rundown?
My name's Dave Waltz, I bought the property last May as an investment to, I tore the house down and then asking for the subdivision of two one acre parcels. I have contracts on both houses with builders and would like to get the approval of the planning commissions and move forward.
Okay, and you know, it'll be a recommendation to council, and probably the big hold here will be whether you can get a driveway for each lot, and that's going to be, whether we, whether we recommend that, you know, they'll be the final stop on that. So that's probably what I see as being a concerning factor, the talking point, I'm sure. I might think of some other stuff.
I appreciate that they're staying large, relatively large lots, it's nice.
Mr. Suter's question about the gravel area, I would not like to have that as an easement, I'd like to talk to the landowner to the left of it and ask that he remove it or that we are able to remove it. So it stays as part of lot number one, not an easement to the bike property.
I'll note that I prefer that as well.
Is this little area here?
Oh, okay.
The driveway runs right beside it, and I think it's really an encroachment on property, my property.
And the side yard setbacks are all, I need to bring my reading glasses because it's a small amount. But what are the side yards? Are they 15 feet? And 50 on the front and back, or 40 on the back?
50 on the front, 40 on the rear for a principal structure.
Okay. What, what leaves net in between 100 or...
It's, the building line's 100 at, at the setback, at 50 feet, it's 100 feet points, 100 points.
You take 30 away from that?
Yes.
Is that right? So you got lots 70, that's a nice sized house.
Yeah.
All right.
So there, and there's a home to the right that's completed, and on the next property over here that is completely built from there.
And how are their, how are, what is their access then?
Bower Hill Road.
So is that the concern, is that we end up with driveways along Bower Hill Road, one right after the other?
Basically, yes, but...
So you're saying that where we sit right now, like as we sit here today, Mike has taken a look at this and said, we can add these two more, but at some point in time as we go down, I mean, no, no, but we can't have driveways every 30 feet along Bower Hill, I mean, that's, that would be a nightmare, right?
My understanding is the intent is to make sure, you're not putting driveways where it's dangerous, because these are major collectors and the rate of travel is much faster, so...
Yeah, I guess that's my point, and given that there's, there's site distance, for sure, but then there's also stopping, you know what I mean? Like the, if Bower Hill Road ends up looking like one of the developments, well, sure, those people are back in development, and so you kind of, you know you're supposed to go slow, but it's also a throughway, and it's not just site distance, it's people backing up and stopping every so many, yes, I'm not necessarily concerned about yours, but I am concerned going forward that as these, you know, people continue to want to put houses on, but it's a nice sized lot, for sure. Otherwise, you don't have that access in Peters Township. What happens when the next guy comes in and the next guy, I mean, how many, how much more develop, I just can't picture in my head right now how much more development is available.
Along Bower Hill Road, I can't imagine there's much, this is one of the few lots of...
It's one of those that are left over.
But the points are well taken, and that's what, you know, if, if we recommend this, you're going to really have to answer to the next, the next level up, so...
All right, whatever, those.
Exactly.
Jim, can you explain...
Jim, can you explain to me the difference between why, so you also, so if we're looking for a recommendation here, the preference is that the adjacent owner remove their, remove their easement?
Yeah, remove, there's no easement right now.
They are encroaching.
Yes, because that's currently a non-conformity, and we want to solve those. I also know how hard DIFPA can be that, when you're dealing with multiple property owners, which is why I only brought the easement before.
Right.
I believe in my, I did know the staff report either have it or work with the property owner to have it removed, or if they're not willing to do that, get an easement reported.
Why do you have to have it? There's a piece of equipment sitting on it right now, correct? I mean, once that piece of equipment goes away, it's, it's your ground.
Right.
Right?
I don't understand why this is the-
Is he claiming this?
When you say remove, I'm very literal on this.
No question.
Is there a claim of some adverse possession, that this encroachment has existed for some period of 21 years or something?
Which might be why there's a piece of equipment sitting on there.
Yeah, I have the understanding that this has always been like that, so it's only accessible from the other properties, so it's been all, it's my understanding, granted I have very limited knowledge of the property, but it's my not understanding that it exists for the benefit of that property owner, and they've kind of just taken over and used that area.
So I'm just saying, Leslie and I are lawyers, and people don't put things and leave them there for a long, long time, and then decide openly, just, so let's say, okay, I'll take them off.
I think that's-
I'm just, my question is how, is how realistic is it that the neighboring owner is going to do that?
I think he will.
You think he will?
Yeah.
Okay.
Take, take the gravel off?
Yes.
Yeah.
Keep near the microphone, yeah, thanks.
I can't say if he would or not. I, I know him.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't have any opinion one way or the other, whether he should or should not. I'm not saying that at all.
And I, yeah, I don't know that it should operate to further detriment of this property owner.
No.
That there's someone already encroaching on his property, so I don't have-
Or it's not, we just don't know, legally.
So you guys, the wording on condition number 2, does that sound good to you, the way it's written? You have that over there, Leslie, or you, you have that number 2, is that worded well for?
Can I see that for a second? I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
On the back across from me, people share a driveway, and that avoids having 2 driveways right next to each other.
I think that's why. Is that acceptable to do?
Would that be mitigated, mitigation of this, if they, can they share a driveway? I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying-
I suppose they could. We would require, the township would require, I've been operating this. The code says that you can't create the lot, it doesn't say address the driveway, so we need the, they need to receive this modification regardless of whether they use a shared driveway or not.
Right.
If they do go the route of shared driveway, we would make them get, do a joint maintenance agreement between 2 properties. That's our only concern with that.
But I think if he's got contracts, those buyers may want to make their own decisions.
Oh, of course. No, no, of course. No, I just meant it as an aside.
I'm fine with, are you, is he agreeable to this? I mean, have you seen it?
He would have seen it, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I don't have any more questions, do you guys?
I don't.
And having no more questions, and definitely no audience comments, let's hear an action motion.
I will make a motion recommending approval of the MTK Development Inc. request for modification and final plan recommendation, subject to the May 7, 2025 township recommendations, staff recommendations, and the, is it 5 or 6?
I have the 4.
I'm sorry, and the 4.
Subject to council.
Subject to the 4 recommendations, including township approval, comments from the planning department letter dated May 7, 2005, be addressed to staff satisfaction, and no be added to the plan, verifying traffic impact fee shall be paid at the time of building permit, Peters Township sanitary authority approval-
Of the plan.
Of the plan, and this issue about easement, right?
That's the part of my-
That's part of the question, why are she asking that, because I was on the number 2. Sorry, there was some confusion.
That's okay, that was a little messy, I apologize.
I didn't get my review wire out till yesterday, so.